This meeting is being recorded.
First, this is a council meeting order, Madam Clerk, please call or roll.
Mayor Olson?
Here.
Alderman Dandrea?
Here.
Alderman Mayor?
Here.
Alderwoman Wilhelm?
Here.
Alderwoman Hanneman?
Here.
Alderman Barber?
Here.
Alderman Nelson?
Here. If you have a quorum, please rise, join the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get going, I just wanted to mention that yesterday we had a very nice ceremony for Veterans' Memorial Day. I think the crowd was better than usual. Patrick, you've been to them before. I think it was. We held it at the library this year, and I made the executive decision that that's where it will be from here on out. So, okay. With that, we move on to Item 1, or Item B, Citizens Comment Period. Any citizen wishing to speak? Give us your name and address, Sue, please.
I sent an email, everyone's probably seen it. A lot of you probably know me. I've been at Parks Meeting, I've been at these meetings before, talking about pickleball. I just wanted to say that I hope that you'll support the temporary striping or permanent solution of pickleball courts at Lyons too, either one. I know that the Pleasant View thing is delayed now, and there really isn't any solution. We have lots of players, young age, all the way to senior citizens. I'm a senior citizen, and I think it's excellent for activity for us, for people to do that want to get out there, don't want to sit on their couch, don't want to just do arts and crafts, or whatever that the city has. So, we have people that are waiting. We're still having to lower our score. You usually play to 11. We're having to lower our score to 9, so that we can rotate our players in more quickly. And I'd also like to say, and you all know that we have a lot of residents that play, plus there are some that are from out of the city, but they do support the local businesses when they're here. And it's really good PR for our city. People are talking about pickleball, and Franklin pickleball is, it's really Miss Geagle and Franklin, and they really talk it up all over the place. And that's how people hear about it. We have people show up, they get to play once for free, and then they sign up through the rec. So, I really hope everyone would support this striping of the courts at Lyons too, so that we can accommodate the players that are coming more popular all the time. That's all.
Hello, my name is Barb McNamara, 7831 South 83rd Street. I just wanted to say that I do also support what Susie's been telling you. I know that you have heard this time and time again about pickleball. It's very, very popular. It is a growing sport. I did write to Mr. Mayor about this, that I do live in the area where the Lyons Courts are. And if anyone would ever come and see on a Monday, Wednesday, Friday morning, there are people that are just waiting to get on. So, I think that it is very cost efficient to put in, to paint the pickleball stripes in, rather than build new pickleball courts. So, if you want to look at it that way, it would be cost efficient. So, thank you very much for your time.
Good evening, Mayor. Patrick Leon, 7836 West Winston Way. I'm going to take a brief break away from pickleball court talk. Before I get to my main point tonight, part of it was, yesterday, I took the opportunity to go over to the Veterans Memorial, which is part of my main point. I was surprised, very pleasantly surprised, in fact, that's probably not a strong enough adjective, I was very glad to see that there is a monument now for police officers and firefighters. I know there are veterans on the other side of the table over there, and for many years, veterans have gotten the due recognition. I think it's a shame sometimes that law enforcement and firefighters aren't recognized. Similarly, they perform as important, and on a very regular basis, more important of a role within our communities for that. So, happy to see that. Anybody who has not been over there to take a look at it, I'd encourage you to go and look at it when you have the chance. It's a nice message. I know the chief was out there, the police chief was out there today, break it in, and it was very nice. But, to my main point, I did take the opportunity yesterday to bring my children out to the Veterans Memorial, to help raise the flags back to full staff, which on Memorial Day, as many know, that's how it's done. The flag is lowered to half-staff until noon, and then at noon, it is raised to full staff. That was only possible due to a lot of coordination with the city's operations supervisor for the Public Works Department, Mr. Bob Tesh. So, I felt it was important to thank him and recognize that he came in on a day off in the middle of the day, helped raise not only the flags at the Veterans Memorial, but then also in front of the library in the parking lot, and then here at City Hall. It was a good lesson for my children. And also, we had another surprise, the Eagle Scout, who was responsible for that project 15 years ago, literally just drove by as we were raising the flags and stopped by to talk with us. So, we got a little bit of the history on it, and a great opportunity. But none of that wouldn't have been possible if Bob hadn't come in on his day off to help do that. So, I want to very personally thank him for that, and again, it's a reflection of the city, and the professionalism, and the support that the City of Franklin full-time staff has for its community. So, again, thank you very much.
Yeah, just a second. Bob, I don't know what Peggy told you, but I wanted you to come in without knowing what it was. So, I was going to give some story about the air conditioning not working, and obviously Peggy didn't believe in that. But I do want to recognize Bob. Bob's an unsung hero here in City Hall. He keeps the place going, and he makes sure that now, with our new air conditioning system that Bob was instrumental in, that we now have comfortable rooms, rather than either freezing or boiling. But Bob maintains City Hall, and he does an excellent job. And when Patrick called me and said, "Can I do this?", absolutely. So, Bob, thank you very much for your hard work. Alderman Mayor?
Just to touch on what Patrick mentioned, thank you for those words. I was involved with Matt Calroy 15 years ago when the flags went up. I still run into them now and then. It's good to hear. Thank you for your kind words. Thank you for raising the flags back up. I was also there yesterday as well, and it was a very nice ceremony, you know, very, very well attended. So, that is all.
I just want to recognize that Bob does a great job helping out with the library, and this isn't the first time he's had to deal with flags. We had some really cold winter days when things were locked up, and he was out there. So, thank you very much for all your help.
You're just, oh, Alderman Barber, sorry.
Okay. Would it be appropriate for the council to send a letter of thank you to the Eagle Scout for having taken on this project, and seen it through to fruition, and made it part of our city?
Yeah, it's part of what I do. I put council's name on it, and off it'll go.
Thank you.
I'll put a copy in your box. You're dismissed, Robert. Thanks, Bob. Anyone else wishing to speak, citizen comment? Thanks, Patrick.
Hello, my name's Jeff Anderson, 2881 West Minnesota Avenue. I just want to speak in support of Susie's request. I help with Sam Cressy running the group Monday, Wednesday, Friday for pickleball. We run the morning, 9 till noon, and we're getting new members all the time. We've got 121 people on the group on WhatsApp. We label it as Franklin pickleball, and we've always got well over 30 people there waiting. I shouldn't say waiting. 16 are playing, the rest are waiting to play, excuse me, pickleball. And I think that this is a cost-effective way to get more people playing pickleball. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay. No one else rise? I will close the citizens' comment period. Thank you very much. Move on to the approval of the regular meeting minutes of the County Council meeting on May 18th. Any additions or corrections? Is there a motion to approve? Dandrea and Barber, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We have no public hearings. We have a whole list of reappointments. Any requests for separate action? Is there a motion to confirm?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
We're going to do Barber and Mayor this time. Madam Clerk?
Actually, I'd like clarification if you're doing the mayoral appointments, or the mayoral appointments plus the aldermanic appointment.
I'd like you to be inclusive on the aldermanic appointment, right?
Alderman Mayor?
Second as well.
Okay.
Alderman Dandrea?
Aye.
Alderman Mayor?
Aye.
Alderwoman Wilhelm?
Aye.
Alderwoman Hanneman?
Aye.
Alderman Barber?
Aye.
Alderman Nelson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Six ayes, no nos, no absences, no abstentions. We move on to letters and petitions, the previously mentioned email from Sue Lance regarding pickleball courts. I think it's appropriate to refer this to...
I'd like to move the temporary striping of the pickleball court at Lyons Legend Park 2.
I'll second that.
Okay, what is temporary striping?
Striping that won't be permanent with paint, more of a tape, is my understanding.
And I'm getting the googly eyes from the city engineer.
I think...
He fell asleep.
So, I would suggest this item's been talked several times at Parks Commission, as you know. There's been some discussion that maybe the tennis folks don't like it. I'm not an expert, either one, so just make sure that, when you say temporary, I'm not sure if tape is what would be sufficient, because after a while, it'll start peeling up. So, if we paint it, we paint it; if we don't, we don't. So, it's at the will of the council of the Parks Commission.
Yeah, I think what maybe they meant was, it's a temporary solution, so I think they want the actual regular paint. And I did second that, but I think there were two of us about the same time, so I don't know. Who got the second on that?
So, it's Alderwoman Hanneman's motion.
And as the city engineer has alluded to, this has been an ongoing issue since prior to my election, and now that I am also the council representative on Parks Commission, there have been recommendations made by the Parks Commission to the extent that we can satisfy the demands and the needs for the large number of pickleball players in the community. Subsequent actions by both Plan Commission and Council have not heeded the recommendations of the Parks Commission for various reasons, and then, once a bid went out for the pickleball courts at Pleasant View Park, that was extremely cost prohibitive based on what was originally budgeted. So, we will not likely have the pickleball courts at Pleasant View this year. There are other discussions that we are dealing with in terms of park acquisition plan that is in the works right now, and looking at other possible solutions for either tennis or pickleball, or both. We just seem, for whatever reasons, to not have come to a good, solid solution and plan for the balance of pickleball to tennis, and bringing our facilities up to a playable standard, be it tennis particularly. And that's been an ongoing issue too, for the Parks Commission. It's been an ongoing issue for Milwaukee County that owns tennis courts in our community that are currently unplayable. Parks Commission is also very hopeful to have some information from the Franklin Public School District in terms of their long-range planning for future facilities and sports courts, whatever, to see if they're going to be putting in tennis courts, because we certainly, as a city, don't want to purchase more tennis courts and spend money upgrading tennis courts over the next few years, if indeed, the school district will be supplying new tennis courts for their tennis team. So, it's a very multifaceted issue, but in the meantime, we have many, many people in our community who are really unable to move forward and grow their activity and meet the needs. So, I see this as a way of not, it's a temporary fix, indeed, until Parks, planning, and the council come together with a distinct plan for that balance, and how to get that done, so that there can be ultimately eight pickleball courts together.
Push your button. Alderman Barber?
Is there any possibility that it can be a dual use, or does putting lines and making pickleball, does that preclude the use as a tennis court when it is open, so that both, both, I mean, is it colored lines that delineate it to let you know which is the tennis and which is the pickleball? I mean, how to, I'd like it a dual use, if at all possible, because I don't want to preclude a use, because I'm sure there's people out there that maybe would like to do it, and if it's open, do it. You know, that's, that would be my only thought as to how that might happen.
Oh, this is the age-old battle. If you're a tennis person, the pickleball lines confuse you. If you're a pickleball person, the tennis lines confuse you. Well, they're a little bit wider, but...
That says worrying about colors, or some designated thing that would be delineating it for both users.
Mr. City Engineer?
And you're exactly right. That has been the discussion. So, the idea was, some of the courts could be dual-use, but the preference is to keep some of them purely tennis, because it is, and I'm not a tennis player, so I can't comment in depth, but I understand that's very difficult for tennis players to...
My question for you is, okay, so next year, public school system takes that land on Forest Hill and makes a whole bunch of pickleball courts. How do we go back on Legend?
Well, I suppose you could repaint. I will let you know that I did talk to Mr. Millsner not too long ago. Everything in the master plan right now is more open-field kind of activities, like soccer, and things that not necessarily court. So, they found it's cost-effective to rent courts in other locales.
So, you say repaint. Will that, we paint the whole surface and then restripe it?
If you want to take it back to it's a purely tennis, yes.
Okay. So, the motion is to use paint, not make it, not make it truly temporary, but a temporary use. Is that your motion? I just had to ask, you know. Okay, on that motion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Move on to G1, page 15, a resolution authorizing certain officials to accept temporary grading easement for Drexel Avenue, Inc., I'm sorry, Drexel LLC for 7508 South 31st. Alderman Wilhelm?
I just had a request, actually, it was from Number 2, but it also applies to Number 1, so I'll just address it here. The request was on the temporary grading easement, Number 5. Since Number 3 says easement expires in December of 2021, Number 5 says the landscaping shall consist of establishing, maintaining a residential quality grass cover through the term of the easement. The clarification was, if it's a late-season seeding, you don't get it until November, and it doesn't come up in the spring, they just want to make sure that the city would carry out that remediation of the effects of the grading, and not leave them hanging, because I have a few of those other issues going on. So, can we just get a clarification that...
I don't have any objection, if you want these re-signed, but...
I don't. I think as long as it's on the record that we acknowledge that it's just nothing but weeds, and nothing comes up, and it was late, that...
I'll pass that along, yes.
Okay. All right, thanks. That's it. I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Similarly, G2, page 21, resolution authorizing certain officials to accept a temporary grading easement from Walter Havelitz at 74, 75, South 49.
Also move to approve?
Second.
Same condition?
Yeah, same issue. Any opposed? Motion carries. G3, page 27, resolution approving an affidavit of correction for the Glenett Park Circle condominiums, essentially adding a wording unfinished basement to 7760 Park Circle Way North. Nelson and Hanneman, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. G4, request of authorization to approve an agreement for professional services with Housiel Levine Associates LLC for the Unified Development Rewrite Project. That is Barber and Hanneman, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're making progress. G5, page 63, preference of pedestrian improvements along State Highway 100 from Prairie Grass Way to Loomis Road. There's four choices here. Mr. City Engineer?
So, if you recall, this is table from last meeting. The question was, which side, east side or west side? And the answer is, either side is fine. As far as cost here, yes.
Alderman Dandrea?
Did you look into the other question that we had in regards to, if we went to a 10-foot, would park impact fees possibly qualify for the pathway?
We have had a discussion recently regarding how wide path has to be to be a path, and I'm not sure we've made an official decision, but I'm thinking we're decided that even a 5-foot would qualify. What a 5-foot prevents us from doing is, really makes it very difficult for DPW to plow it. So, I would make that a sidewalk, and it would be treated like a sidewalk for the residents there. But 8-foot is fine, 10-foot is fine, but the wider, the better it is. It's easier for DPW to plow, so that's, I'm more comfortable calling that a pathway.
Another question we had is, is this will be maintained by DPW?
The wider it is, the more, yes, that's easier.
More likely it is that DPW will, because there, I have received an email or two, and I'm not sure if Mr. Mayor has, in regards to if we consider it on the east side, that those resident, either side, that the residences would not be responsible for maintaining the snow club on these sections.
To be consistent with previous decisions, the wider it is, and if we can plow it, then we will maintain it. So, we don't want to treat it like a sidewalk for residents who require to clean it.
So, under this plan, the 5-foot section is, a 5-foot width is included?
Yes.
If we go wider, then park impact fees may or will, could be used?
I would say they are, yes.
Okay, so we could have a match on it. Then I would prefer to go wider, so we could make sure that DPW will maintain the clearance of this in our inclement weather of snow.
I could have a sidebar with the city administrator. Have we decided that a 5-foot sidewalk can qualify? Okay.
Well, what we'll do is, is we'll make a recommendation that to work with staff, but to make sure that it qualifies for what we are asking to be accomplished, to be able to utilize our park impact fees, and also to be able to maintain it with our DPW equipment.
Understood.
Okay.
Do you have a preference on the east side or west side?
I don't have a preference. So, whichever, you originally made a recommendation to have it on the west side. So, it is up to the rest of the individuals on the council to decide, you know, under the professionalism of the engineers that evaluated this whole process, they came up with a recommendation originally to the west side. So, if, I will go with the recommendation, and it's also in Alderman Nelson's district, so I'd like him to chime in as well.
And so, therefore, I recognize Alderman Nelson.
Thank you. Mr. City Engineer, so just so we are straight, that right off from the onset, it was determined or recommended by DOT that it would be on, should be on the west side?
They believe that would be the best side, yes.
Okay. And I agree, I concur with Alderman Dandrea, that I'd like to see the wider the path to hopefully incorporate park impact fees, and also the wider to make sure that DPW can, you know, deal with it for the inclement of snow, or whatever. And I guess, are you going to make the motion, then? All right, then I'll go, I guess, with kind of Item A, which would be on the west side with a path, are we going to say?
You want B.
Well, we're going to go strictly with a cement, okay. So, we're not going to go side, we're going to go with B with the path on the west side, which would be in compliance with a size that would be acceptable for DPW to maintain, and for, to totally cost share for park impact fees.
Okay, Nelson and Dandrea, this is Option B. Just for the record, so we went from, and this is a good expenditure, I'm just putting it on the record, we went from a $7,000 expenditure to an $82,000 expenditure less park impact fees. So, it's potentially 64%, 63%? So, it's potentially $30,000 or $40,000. It's okay, I'm just putting it on the record, that's all. Of course.
The reason why, the reason why... I would agree to expend the additional dollars, is this is a rather unsafe area for bikers, and this will take them out of that area, and those sections of the side roads get extremely gravelly and dirty, and it makes it very difficult for pedestrian or cyclists on that section of road.
Yes. So, if I could clarify if the concern is...
Hold on. Mark?
Oh, excuse me. Mr. Mayor, I'm done.
Thank you. Mr. City Engineer, then Alderman Wilhelm?
So, if I could clarify, if the concern is for cyclists, then I would recommend definitely something wider than 6-foot. Minimum 8 and 10 is preferable.
Alderman Wilhelm?
Okay, so now I'm a little confused on the size, but we can go back to that. The, I thought when we were doing Marquette, because it was linked with the school and linked with the Pleasant View path and the trail, and we determined we could use impact fees on that walkway, which wouldn't be, you know, a real wide width like we're talking about now. So, I don't really care what width this one is. If 5-foot covers the whole cost, that's great. Using impact fees is also fine with me. Eight, I mean, 8-foot seems like a nice compromise in the middle of cost and access, and allowing DPW to take care of it, and not having a lot of future maintenance. So, that would be my preference, but since it's not in my district, I'll let, you know, the two of them make their decisions, but I'm thinking 8 at this point. Thank you.
All right, so the net of all of this is, go for the west side and the biggest path that makes sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. See, you gotta boil this stuff down sometimes. All those in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. G6, inclusion of pedestrian access with West Forest Home Avenue, which is a Milwaukee County Department of Transportation road, and a reconsideration. Mr. City Engineer?
So, this project is a little different than the one we just discussed. This project, as Mayor mentioned, is a county project, but they will not pay for any of it.
it. It would be at our cost, but I would tell you that it's cheaper to do it as part of their project than for us to do it independently. So the question is, is that their, their project is extending from Jefferson Terrace or Highview, depending on your side of the county line, all the way up to Speedway, which is the Menards area. Looking at that area, do they, would we want a sidewalk and/or pathway? I guess we could go that direction, too. But one side, both sides, some sections, all sections, I don't know that I have a preference. This does appear to be an area where you do have a trail crossing in a couple of locations, so trying to get people to and from. The hike bike trail, I think, is, would be admirable. There is some shopping up the ways and so forth, so I guess I'll let the mayor open up for discussion.
I'll, I'll, I'll be the controversial one. It's kind of my job. The makeup of the, the businesses and the geography, I don't see a lot of walkers, especially for 730, well, I'm sorry, 366,000. If we did, my suggestion would be on the west side of the street, just from St. Martin's to Speedway, because there's residents there, there's also the bike trail that crosses that. That would be my suggestion, but that's all that is. Alderman Dandrea.
I want the council to understand that I'm not one to foolishly use park impact fees, but we do have a serious issue that is continuously facing us in the underutilization of these collected funds. And so granted, okay, they don't want to cover it. I agree with the mayor's comment in regards to, we've got to, we've, we've got to create protections, especially for the people that are cyclists, and to, and pathways. Maybe if we have it, people will use it. And that's, that's the thing, we've got to have, there's always been connectivity, and we've stressed to create more connectivity to make it a healthier society in a, in whole. So I don't fully understand, the city, the federal government wants to do this, the county wants to do this, but they don't want to encourage any kind of safety?
Yes.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a rhetorical question. I mean, that's, that's what's so crazy here, is, is, but I, I would support what the council would like to do with, I would agree to put something here, especially from the St. Martin's to the pathway, to create some more connectivity.
Okay. Alderman Mayor, I was going to call on you, but Nelson pushed this button, you didn't. You're next. Alderman Nelson.
I had an opportunity to speak with the, with Mr. Morrow on this, and I, I would like to get some, some input from citizens and such that are going to be impacted by this, because this is going to be kind of a big deal. And I do agree that I would like to see it as a larger path for connectivity, as well as usership, and incorporating park fund, impact fees. So I, somehow, and I know I spoke with Mr. Morrow about this, that we could get some, whether it's a, some sort of informational meeting, or some sort of mail or something put out just to get some feedback, before we move forward, because this is a big deal. I'll yield.
It would be good to involve the county supervisor. Alderman Mayor.
Am I on? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I support this as well, whichever the way the council wants to go with this. Glenn, my only question is, there's already trail there. When we talk about from St. Martin's Road to Speedway, there's already the trail for part of that that goes over the bridge that we approved four weeks ago to Ken Wendell Park. How would this lay in with that, or would it cover that same area? Would it be a second path there?
If you were to skip a path, maybe I would skip the section from the trail crossing to, to Rossin. I would think that might be appropriate, because it's much, it's much safer to take the hike bike trail from, from that trail crossing up to Rossin.
And no matter what, it wouldn't make sense to redo the trail from that section. Would we be able to do it to that section and then pick up at Ken Wendell Park and complete it to Speedway or something like that?
That would be appropriate, I think.
Okay. I would support that, for sure.
And we're talking trail, bicycle, if it is?
Trail, yes. Whatever we can do to use impact fees and make it as economically feasible as possible, but I think safety has to be our number one concern in that area. And there are a lot of people that use that trail for walking dogs, for walking, for biking at various times of day, and all the way to Muskego and back, and everywhere in between.
When do you need an answer?
They would like it quickly as possible, but if I'm going to survey some people, maybe we can open it up for the, put something on a website or something, we'll think about.
So let me propose this. This is for Alderman Nelson. Let the county know that we're interested in one side, probably no more than Rossin to Speedway. Does that sound like a? I'm sorry, I said Rossin. My apologies. St. Martin's.
St. Martin's is.
St. Martin's, yeah. Oh, I had a brain fade there.
I would suggest there might be merit getting from Jefferson Terrace, because you have a lot of folks that live there, to get them up to the trail.
They can go the back way and connect across St. Martin's tours.
Hmm.
And they can also get to it from the bike trail.
I'm not aware of how.
Skeego Trail.
Yeah, but they would have to go on the road for that, though, wouldn't they? I mean, there's not a real direct path for them.
There's a map on page 67. I'm sorry, 69.
Yeah, this, this would give them, I'm, I'm saying currently the trail, the direct access to the trail doesn't exist. This would give them access, as you're suggesting, and I agree with that.
I have no dog in this hunt, so, you know, it's whatever you guys want. I'm just trying to save a few bucks if we can. Push your button, Mike.
I guess.
Alderman Barber.
My, my input on this would be simply to say, I like, I like a more expansive trail. I think people will use it when they see it, and they'll, they'll take it off, and they will have the options at that point, so I'd like to see it be more expansive or the longer distance. That's my only thought.
Then I'm going to revise my suggestion and say that we're going to, as a council, we're going to tell the city engineer to tell the county that we're interested in the full length pending public involvement. Right? Does that sound fair?
Yes.
So is that your motion, Alderman Nelson?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second? Alderman Mayor? Nelson and Mayor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. G7, page 71, resolution approving the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources NR 208 Compliance Maintenance Report for 2020, as there is a new one at your place. Mr. Morrow.
So just so you know, there was a, a math error. So the change, if you look on the second page, at the top, the 99301 has, is the new number. The old number was 97, I'm sorry, 73231. And then we followed the math from there.
The replacement is correct.
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
We should do it. As revised.
Alderman Barber, as revised, and Alderman Dandrea hasn't done one tonight, so let's give it to him for a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. G8, page 83, is to allow the fire assistant chiefs to have a $400 a month vehicle allowance already, the money is already budgeted, but not specified for that purpose. Your motion regarding this? Wilhelm and Hanneman, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk.
Aye.
Alderman Mayor?
Abstain.
Alderwoman Wilhelm?
Aye.
Alderwoman Hanneman?
Aye.
Alderman Barber?
Aye.
Alderman Nelson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Five ayes, no noes, one, no absent, and one abstention. G9, page 85, authorization of a benefit consulting services agreement with USI Insurance Services LLC for employment and retiree health insurance and other ancillary benefits, July 1, 2020 to June 20, June 30, 2024. It's been moved and seconded. Barber and Mayor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. G10, page 89, authorization to purchase additional needed storage capacity for Microsoft Exchange, which is the city's email system. The amount of $8,423.40. Dandrea and Hanneman, Alderman Barber.
At this point of the TVs, is that adding eight times 1.2 to the total, then?
So no, it would be a total, let's see, we currently have three terabytes, and I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to get back to you on that. I think it is eight more 1.2 terabytes.
So that would be adding to the three?
Yes.
And that would be the total capacity, then? Okay.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. G11, page 91, resolution to amend the City of Franklin Investment Policy Statement for the City Franklin Defined Benefit Retirement Plan.
No approval?
Hanneman and Dandrea, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. G12, monthly financial report. Any highlights, Mr. Rosenberg?
These were reviewed at the Finance Committee meeting last month. I did learn today that the city has spent a little better than $35,000 on pandemic-related wage expenses that have been reflected in the financials. They are already included in these numbers, but they weren't separately budgeted, so we're just using some health department, police, and fire wage costs now related, that are specifically being coded as related to the pandemic.
Any questions? Alderman Mayor?
Will that be requireable or retrievable?
Currently, there are no federal programs that I'm aware of, other than the most recent American Rescue. American Rescue Plan. These costs may relate to that.
Thank you. And you're not projecting less than $50,000 landfill siting revenue, are you, for July? Or for June? Upon June?
Landfill siting revenues have been.
Look at your chart.
Oh.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion received in place on file?
No vote.
I don't mean to embarrass you about that. It was a sincere question. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have come to the end of the regular business items. We move now to the exciting licenses and permits. Alderwoman Nelson? Alderman Hanneman?
Identify as well.
Mayor, the License Committee moves approval of the following. Page one, Gottschalk, Hanson, Kielbasa, Kish, Mora, Brails, Techen, and Wesson. On page one, we move Hogan, hold for appearance, and Visilevich is approved with a letter. All remaining applicants, new and renewal, we move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Let me catch up here. I'll do that later. Move on to I-1, vouchers. Is there a motion approving the following city vouchers with an ending date of June 1, 2021, in the amount of $1,960,901.28? And payroll dated May 21, 2021, in the amount of $406,528.34, and payments to various payroll deductions in the amount of $429,766.96, plus city matching payments. An estimated payroll of June 4, estimated at $422,000, and payments of various payroll deductions estimated $232,000, plus city matching payments, and property tax disbursements with an ending date of May 28, 2021, in the amount of $3,1,145.44.
No vote. Second.
Barber and Dandrea. Madam Clerk.
Alderman Nelson?
Aye.
Alderman Barber?
Aye.
Alderwoman Hanneman?
Aye.
Alderwoman Wilhelm?
Aye.
Alderman Mayor?
Aye.
Alderman Dandrea?
Aye.
Motion carries. Six ayes, no noes, no absences, no abstentions. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No vote.
Second.
All those, that would be Barber and Hanneman, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.